Is this okay?
You changed the battery, right?
Yeah.
Are we ready? I was going to, but I wanted to see if she was prepared.
Notice of a public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title 5 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act notice is hereby given to the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas. In accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, we'll convene a workshop and a special meeting on Tuesday, August 31st, 2010, at 5:45 PM and 6:00 PM in the commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Workshop Item A: Presentation Regarding El Valle Coffee Table Book Project by Lawrence V. Loth, President and CEO of the Gorgas Science Foundation.
Honorable Commissioner, I'd like to introduce Larry Loth from the Gorgas Science Foundation. This is one of the projects that was funded by BCIC.
I intended to give a book to everybody, but they're all still sitting in a large steel container at the Port of Houston. And so, really, the books aren't going to come out then formally until September 18th, even if we have to drive a couple of pickups up and pick them up. What we tried to do, we set aside, set out trying to do a capture, a picture of, of the area that we've all grown up around and sometimes take it for granted. I mean, there's so many stories in history and, and the nature here that we take for granted often because we grew up with it. Most people don't know that at one time, the Rio Grande was described as North America's Second Mississippi. At one time, dozens of riverboats used to fight the current upriver, and even the state of Chihuahua in the 1830s did a study that the Rio Grande Delta was capable of handling the whole transportation needs for the region. Well, that's sort of strange when we go see the river below the International Bridge now, and it's just this tiny little thing, most of the time, except for last week, and it's just barely a trickle under the bridge. But just as the river has changed completely in the last 200 years, so has the face of the land that we see around us. You know, we see subdivisions, we see farmlands, but what we don't realize sometimes is the incredible biodiversity that still exists at the edge of the fields, along irrigation ditches, and the reserves, and the sanctuaries that we have in South Texas. And those of us who've grown up here sometimes take both the history and the natural biodiversity that we grew up with for granted. And so, we set out trying to do a book that kind of whet people's appetite and introduce both the history and the biodiversity of the area so that it could get national distribution because people from all over the United States come here and want to come here and see what we have, and we have an incredible story to tell. And, and that's what we set out to at least start to do, is tell this story. The book is going to have national distribution. It was a great big struggle because, as the old farmer said, "Sometimes ignorance is bliss." And you don't know when you go into a project how hard it is to do it because all of us volunteered our time to do it. We did all the graphics, we did all the photographs, we did all the layouts in-house, we did everything up till sending it to the publisher in-house. We also fought our publisher because we said we wanted a book that was both in Spanish and in English. The Spanish on the right-hand side of the page and the English on the left-hand side, and it tracked equally along telling the story. And so, we didn't find out until later that most of the time publishers make you publish one in English and one in Spanish because it's so hard to do that dual layout. But we thought it was very important to approach it that way. You've heard stories about film editing, about blood on the cutting room floor. Well, literally, there was blood on our cutting room floor because when we started doing, when we started putting the final version of the book, we had committed to do a book that was like 220 pages. Well, we ended up with a book that was 380 pages, so we had to cut, and we still hadn't covered the story well, we didn't think. So, we ended up having to cut out 150 pages, and, and so, so many pieces of our story are not told here because you can do a whole book on the, on the stories, the legendaries, all of the pieces of our history, as well as the ma- the natural biodiversity. We raised a great bit of money to do this, but we came up short in the end, and we were very thankful to BCIC who helped us, pushed it over the top and helped us get this published. Like I said, we all volunteered our time, and the 25 people who helped write the sections of this, we picked people who kind of knew little, little pieces of the story and asked them to write a section. But anyway, the, the B-I-C-C really helped us in, in bringing this to life. Unfortunately, there are only three books in existence at the moment. I'm passing them around and carting them around because I'm supposed to be handing them out, and I intended to hand you all a copy tonight and so you could see it. We think this is a very important book because it'll get national distribution and, and hopefully spur people to come here to see what we have and to explore the rest of the story of the Rio Grande Delta. And by the way, we try to use the word "delta" because technically, although we all call it "El Valle," it's a delta, and so that's, at least from the upper valley down to the mouth of the river. Anyway, our book signing and launch is on September the 18th. If we can get enough people to go up to Houston to pick up, out of the container at the port, enough books to bring it down. So, anyway, this is something that we did in-house, it's from here, it's our point of view, it's, we think it's a start, a telling part of our story. So, anyway, we'll pass it around.
Thank you, Mr. Loth. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Loth, where will this publication be made available?
It's going to be sold by Costco, Amazon, but we'll have it at the, we'll have it here locally at bookstores, at the natural, at like Santana, all the, all the natural preserves, and we'll have it here also. We're also going to give it to, be careful when you promise things. We said, "You know what? We're going to give this book to every single public library and every school library in, on the delta." Well, two weeks ago, I contacted Region 1 and I said, "Okay, that's got to be about, maybe 200, right?" No, it's 600 and some public libraries, and so, we're giving out at least 600 and some of these copies to the public lives across the valley and all the public schools. So, always be careful when you promise.
I appreciate it, Mr. Loth.
Any other questions? Thank you. Great. Ledley.
We pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one nation, under God, one and one individual.
And do we have a Satchburg?
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for your love, your grace, your mercy, and your, your many blessings. Help us not to forget the great things you blessed us with when we're looking at the things that we need. Lord, tonight I ask you to help each of us to hear clearly from you, to get divine direction. Lord, I ask you to help us to see the other person's point on each issue and to treat each other with respect even when we disagree on the issues. Let the outcome of this meeting be good for the City of Brownsville in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. And Commissioners' report? Commissioner Atkinson?
I'll pass.
Commissioner Camarillo?
I'll be, I'll be real brief, may I put it that way? I want to thank the Commission and the mayor that attended the BYOB. Last Thursday, we had the Bring Your Own Bag Day, and this was celebrated all across Brownsville. As you can notice, we gave some stickers out, some door hangers promoting the Plaque Bag Ordinance, whether it was at HUB, at Walmart, Stripes, or the mall. This was an opportunity for the, for the city to kind of come together and have a dry run before January 1, 2011. I was at the mall for, you know, for about an hour or so that day. I thought things went very well. They collected at least, at least 1,000 bags or more, and 1,000 reusable bags were given to individuals who came and swapped their plastic for reusable. The thing was a great success, people heard, listened, and I want to thank all of our partners who, that afternoon and that day, gave their time, their, their efforts, and obviously, resources to help with the Bring Your Own Bag Day. I thought it was a huge success, and I want to thank all of them and the committee members and helping communities for helping out. This past weekend, we did a, a small graffiti cleanup around District 3, 1, 2, 3, and 4. There's about 20 sites that were cleaned up. Obviously, there's quite a bit more, and the group is planning another cleanup in the near future. Actually, I wanted to give praise and thanks to Public Works, Mr. Santana Torres, and all the folks in Public Works and with our landfill. As many of you know or may not know, our landfill received, received a perfect score by the state, by TCEQ, in regards to compliance. City of Brownsville's never ever received a, a perfect score. I think we're the first in the state, and now maybe the country. I want to thank Santana and all the employees for all the hard work that they do to keep the landfill clean, make it safe for all of us, but also to be respected amongst all the other landfills in the state of Texas. They did a great, great job, I can't stress enough. I don't think people understand how important landfill really is and to maintain it and what goes into it, but our crews have done a great, great job, and they've worked on, they work on it each and every day, and so, they deserve a whole lot of thanks and a whole lot of credit, and I appreciate Santana's leadership as well as all the individuals that work at our landfill. So, I want to congratulate you all and thank you for, for all that you do. That concludes our report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Atkinson gave your report?
I passed it.
Okay. Let's go to the consent agenda. Well, let me give my report.
Item 3, Consent Agenda Items A through B.
Let's go back to item 1, please.
Item 1?
Yeah.
Item 1, Mayor's Report.
Okay, in brief, I traveled to Victoria, met with the governor and the mayor over there, did a couple of things, participated in the humanitarian aid, also met with the governor and the Weir Project, and he invited me to Mexico City. Went to Mexico City, met with the Secretary of Canawa, which is equal to our EPA over here, and I believe we got the Weir Project unstuck. It was, it was stuck in this technical process, and we should be having a meeting here in Brownsville pretty soon between IBWC and CILA and PUP and, and all the stakeholders in this project to continue to go forward. I know it's, it's a project that I've been working on for three years. Some people don't believe in it, but I want you to know that, you know, it won't be for lack of trying. At least we're moving it forward, and hopefully, we'll get there very soon. I think we're in the last leg, so I think the governor's support and facilitating the meeting with a high-ranking official in Mexico City was very helpful, and we appreciate it. We also had the mayor of Victoria here and had a, an event for him, presented the key to the city proclamation. We anticipated about 70 people, I think we had close to 200. It was a huge success. I thought the mayor was very impressed with the welcome and the recognition. He's a good man, he works very hard, and I think he's an example of the leadership that's going to be leading Mexico. Very honest person that I know of, very hard at work, and I think promoting and forming alliances with Mexico is what we should be doing to improve our, our sales receipts, tax receipts, getting people to invest in Brownsville by properties, shop, and come and visit us. So, those are, aside from the meetings and everything else, those are two important things that stick out right now. I also attended the, of course, the Plastic Bag Committee meetings. I came back for that meeting from, from Victoria and left again just to make sure that we were on track. I appreciate what the committee's doing, working very hard to make this possible and to make it a smooth transition to comply with January 1st. So, everybody that's participating, you know, deserves a lot of credit for their hard work and their interest to build a better, better city. With that, we'll go on to item 3. Is this an item?
Item 3, Consent Agenda Items A through B.
Move that through.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Samora, second by Commissioner Gowen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 4?
Item 4, Consideration in Action to Replace One Member and Appoint Two Members to the Entertainment District, Entertainment District PID Advisory Committee.
Mayor, I'd like to appoint Mr. Jonathan Gracia to the Entertainment District.
Second?
Jonathan?
Jonathan Gracia?
Jonathan Gracia. We have a motion by Commissioner Camarillo for Jonathan Gracia, and a second by Commissioner Gloria. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. There's another member? Is there another member?
I'd like to appoint Mr.
Is everybody getting an appointment or just?
Daniel, I'd also like to appoint Mr. Daniel Lance to the, to the Entertainment District.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, again, by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Samora, on Daniel Lance. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Don't you have two?
Let me, at the request of the Deputy City Manager and Finance Director, we'd like to move to 8. Could I have a motion to move number 8 up?
Some of.
Motion by Commissioner Camarillo can have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samora can move it up. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission.
May I read item 5?
Oh, I'm sorry.
First public hearing to discuss the proposed 2010 ad valorem tax rate, fiscal year 2010, of 70 cents per $100 valuation, which is 7.63%.
Number 8.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thanks for bringing that to my attention.
Number 8, please.
Number 8, Consideration in Action to Adopt Resolution Number 2010-056 of the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation with respect to the issuance of approximately $2.1 million in principal amount of sales tax revenue bonds in Series 2010 to provide additional funds to fin- to finance the construction of a multipurpose community sports park.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission, this item will be presented to you by Mr. Adrian Galván, who is with Estrada y Nosa, our financial advisor. If there's any legal question to this particular item, we have Tom Scurgeon with a firm of McCall, Parker, and Forden that can answer your question. Mr. Galván?
Good evening. My name is Adrian Galván with Estrada y Nosa. I've worked with the firm for 15 years. I've had the honor of being the, the ma- the head quant person, the numbers person for the city, but it's always good to get in front of the elected officials to actually interact and actually see a deal go through. What, what I'm here to present is a financing, what I handed out was a summary of financing for the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation. We, the par amount, the amount of this financing is $1,905,000. It's on the, the cover page, and if you flip just past the cover page, I've got a slide. Question? Sorry, thank you. Got a slide that's labeled "Historical Analysis." This, this is the indices of municipal borrowing rates, and the graph goes back to January of 2000. And if you see, I drew a red line showing the, the low point for the, for one of the indices, and if you go across the line, we are at the lowest point on this graph. Interest rates are at the lowest point at this moment as of Friday, as, actually, it goes back to 1967. You've, you've been hearing about the economy and the stock market. Well, when, when the stock market, economy's bad, people go to municipal debt, the type of financing that we're bringing to you today. That's what I'm trying to show on this slide. If you go to the next page, summary of competitive bids, we were asked to put together an RFP on behalf of the corporation, and just to clarify, the, the debt that we're talking about tonight, it's, it's the corporation's debt, it's not on the, the city's debt, it's, it's not property tax. The only source of revenue that can be used to pay for these bonds is the dedicated sales tax for the corporation. I just wanted to be, be clear on that. This summarizes the process that we went, went through for the last week. We sent down an RFP to eight individual private placement banks, banks that bid on this type of, of securities. The purpose of the RFP was to go through a competitive process, get the lowest rate possible for the city, for the corporation, excuse me, and the deadline was yesterday at 3 o'clock. The summary box here shows, we received three bids. Capital One, public funding, gave you an, an interest rate of 3.99%. So, you've got two other bids. The cover bid was at a 4.91, and the third bid was at a 5.8. Our firm's recommendation is, is if you decide to move forward with this deal, is to go with Capital One, take their 3.99%. If you instruct, if, if the deal is approved and we're instructed, financial advisor along with, with your bond counsel will move toward closing, and we'll get you funds by September 30th. September 30th will be the closing date when the, the bond deal closes and funds are transferred.
Adrian, so, so what was it, what is the difference from the last time we voted? It was understood that it was going to be a 1.8 $100 loan that BCIC was going to go after, and then the $500 was going to come from, from the general fund. Is that the same thing or is this different?
Next slide. Yeah, next, next slide I'll answer the question because the, the amount, there's a $2.1 million, the initial amount. If you, if you flip to the next slide, sources and uses, what you need for the project is 1.8 million. We had a reserve fund that, the initial numbers, we were funding, fully funding an amount that made you, you'd have to borrow 2.1. We found out after we, we did the, the research with finance that, that your reserve fund was actually more fully funded before this issue than, there was extra funds there, so we had to put less money in a reserve fund. If you look at this number here on the screen, 62,618, that's not a cost of the deal, that's you borrowing to fully fund your reserve fund. You've got a balance now. 62,000 brings that balance up to where it needs to be after this financing. So, 1.8 is, is project, 62 is like a piggy bank, it's your side money. If there's, if there's a shortfall, there's not a shortfall, that's used to, to make the last payment. And then you've got the cost, the cost of issuance, the 40,000. Does that, does that answer the question or is?
No, maybe I'm, maybe I'm off. I, I guess what I'm asking is, when we said the 1.8 was going to be a loan, are we still seeing, is the GO the loan?
No, there's, well, first of all, there's, this is not GO, it's, it's revenue, it's a revenue bond. So, this is not, this is not impacting your GO debt, it's not self-supporting COs.
Okay, so then, am I wrong? Did I interpret it incorrectly? Last, last time we voted that they were going to go out for 1.8 loan and then take the 500,000 of their, of the general fund? Am I, am I, was I incorrect in interpreting that or am I correct? That's correct.
We're not using general fund money.
Okay, so, we're not going to use general fund money, therefore, we're going to go out for the revenue bonds?
The corporation is selling the, the.
The title, the, the bond is titled Sales Tax Revenue Bonds via a private placement, and it's through the corporation, not, not through the, the city.
Okay, how much of the revenues is being made towards this?
Next, next page. We'll, we'll summarize that. If you, the spreadsheet, we call these the ugly spreadsheets, a lot of numbers, it's, it gets a little confusing, but the first column shows the BCIC sales tax revenue debt that's already booked. That's, you've got that, I think it's an '04 deal and '07 deal. And then the second column is the CO's self-supporting that, that you've issued in the past. If you, toward the middle of the spreadsheet, I've got a column that's in bold, that, those are the debt service payments for the deal that we're bringing to you tonight. The, the column third from the right, that's, that's BCIC's debt after this issue with what's booked already. The coverage, to, to answer your question, Mayor, the coverage factor, total coverage ratio, that's a calculation of, okay, you've got the sales tax that's dedicated, BCIC sales tax. How much of that sales tax are we using? Coverage there is about two times. So, what two, what that means is you got two times more sales tax than you have debt. And that, that's a, that's a comfortable, that's a good coverage ratio. The, the buyers of this debt like, hey, you've got two times more than you need to pay me, I feel comfortable that you're going to pay me. But to answer your question, BCIC is, is that, that column third from the right, that's what BCIC's debt will be, and your, the sales tax that's collected for this is, is close to double the max number.
So, there'll be only about $270,000 left approximately?
The, the last column, excess revenue, if you, if you have your sales tax, the last estimated number I had, 3.9, you pay the debt, excess revenue is, is what's left over. So, you, you still have a, a stream of 1.9, you know, 2.3 million a year after you pay all your debt from that sales tax. That last column, excess revenues? You see it?
Yeah, I see, I see, I see.
Turns out correct.
So, that will be left for other projects?
Yes, sir. Do you pay your debt, everything's paid, and that's, that's for, for other projects?
They're telling me this, the maintenance will be taken out of this too?
Correct.
Okay, how much is, how much is the total cost of the operations and the debt and service?
To, for the.
Sports park.
For the, what was your question?
Sports park.
Oh, what, 700,000. And Commissioner, on your question you, you asked earlier, we're going to use 500,000 dollars from the monies that are in reserve in the BCIC fund, and we're only going to borrow 1.8, so the total project will be about 2.3. That was your, your original question?
Yes, thank you. But it's not going to be 700 because that's going to, 700 will be decreased by the annual revenues that, that the sports park brings in, correct? So, it's projected as being 700, but next year it could be 500, correct?
Or it could be more. As the park grows, maintenance costs grow.
Let me ask you, are you saying, Pete, that we're looking at, there'll be 1.4 million dollars left for other projects? Or do I have that wrong?
That's correct.
More or less.
Yeah, that also includes administration also. You have to add the administration, which is about 250,000.
So, you gotta take the administration off from there?
Right.
So, they, that's.
There's, there's still funds that are available. I guess that's your main question.
Well, yeah, well, I want to know what, I want to know what the bottom line is, what's available for the popular life projects. So, then you're talking about 1.2 left after the administration.
Right.
Is there any more that needs to be deducted?
No, the only, the only thing that comes out, Mayor and Commissioners, are the, the administrative fee, it's 250,000, and then you have the 700,000 that, that is maintenance for the sports park. Those are the two ones that, that are fixed, and then the rest is, is for the other, other projects.
But are that 700,000, it's going to go to 5 because we're using what the sports parks generated to pay this loan? So, it's really 500,000 that's going toward the maintenance. So, nothing's going to get changed there? Commissioner Gowen?
I just have the question similar to Commissioner Camarillo's. This is the same thing that we talked about the last time, but you, the terms are different. In other words, I was under the impression of the loan, as Commissioner Camarillo said, but can you just speak about that for a second? In other words, this is not an additional project, am I right?
No, 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 no.
Okay, so, could you just, for the public, explain the difference in terminology?
I think the reason for going this way is because the cost of finance is cheap.
Yeah. That's correct. When you're borrowing at the same level as your other sales tax revenue bonds, you can get the 3.99%. We sent the, the RFP to eight banks, three responded. The best one was 3.99. If you're doing just a loan, it's subordinate to the. If you're doing just a loan, it's subordinate to the debt that's already on the books. So I think it would be difficult to get that. And you're not going, if you did, you wouldn't get a three point nine nine percent.
So the direction was to go to revenue bonds, correct?
Correct.
Just so that people understand, it's not additional, extra, this is the same thing.
And I just want to be real clear on that, because, you know, we went one thing last meeting, and then today it's something totally different. I don't think we were aware of it.
Yeah, I can reiterate. It's a private placement financing, which was the same terminology used last time. The vehicle that you're using to access the market is a sales tax revenue bond issue. It's a loan. That's the title of the loan, and that gives you the preferential interest rate. Because it's at parity at the same level of your other revenue debt. And that's how we were able to bring you the three point nine nine percent.
Did you want to say something, Delia?
He answered the question.
Any other questions?
The last, the last page I've got is just the working group participants. This is the, if you decide to move forward with this, financial advisor, bond counsel, the purchaser, paying agent. This is a group that, that'll work between now and September thirtieth, close a deal, and get the funds for the corporation. And if you have any other questions, I'm.
Appreciate the hard work, Delia.
Thank you, thank you for your trust. And fifteen years I've been working for the city, and I've really enjoyed it. Appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I make the motion to approve?
Yes, a motion to approve, by Commissioner Camarillo's second, by Commissioner Ekerson, is that right? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. All right, let's go back to. Item five.
Item five, first public hearing to discuss the proposed twenty-ten ad valorem tax rate of seventy cents per one hundred dollar valuation, which is seven point six-three percent over the effective tax rate of sixty-five cents per one hundred valuation.
Pete?
I don't know, Mayor, members of the City Commission, on August the seventeenth, we came to you to ask you to hold two public hearings. One on the August the thirty-first, and the other one on September seventh. And that's to discuss the possibility of increasing the property tax rate. And that's what, this is our first public hearing that we're, that we're having. Next week, which will be September the seventh, will be our second, our second meeting.
This is a public hearing?
As you recall, the effective tax rate for the coming year was calculated at sixty-five, seventy-five, fifty-six. Any rate above that rate requires public hearings. And since we are proposing a higher tax rate, it's not in the budget, by the way. Just, we're just a proposal that we're making to generate more funds for the city of general fund. The total amount that we would, right now, that the city has, based on the effective tax rate, this are the revenues that we would be collecting, assuming that there is no tax rate increase. This, this is the history of the tax rates that the city has had for the last few years. In two thousand and two, it was sixty-eight cents. Two thousand and five, all the way to two thousand and five, was sixty-eight cents. And then it went down to sixty-five oh-two, and it's remained consistent since two thousand and six in the sixty-five cent range. The, this, this particular slide shows what the increase would generate if we were to increase it above the effective rate. The fifty cents, meaning that the effective rate is sixty-five, seventy-five, fifty-six, we increase it to fifty cents, it would be to sixty-six, twenty-five, fifty-six. And it would generate two hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars more annually. A penny would generate four ninety-seven to sixty-four. The last, on that particular slide, is seventy, seventy-seven, forty-four, seventy cents, seventy-seven, forty-four. That's the rollback rate. This is the rate that the City Commission can adopt without, you know, there's no need for voter approval. Any, any rate above the seventy, seventy-seven, forty-four would require a voter approval. What does that, this particular slide shows how much more a household in Brownsville average would pay a year. The last year, the value of the residents, average residents, would eight, eighty thousand to twenty-eight. In two thou, in this particular year, it went down, it went up to eighty thousand, three forty-six. It was a slight increase. Again, this is an average. There are property owners in the city that actually have their property values lowered. But this is just an average of the, of the city. If you look at the rate of sixty-five, forty-one, eighty-nine, that's the current rate that the city has right now. It would go up to sixty-five, seventy-five, fifty-six, because that's the effective tax rate. And the other one, seventy-seven, seventy-seven, seventy, seventy-seven, forty-four is a rollback rate. Why does one cent raised, or actually a citizen would pay if his tax rate, if the tax rate was increased by one penny? The amount, the annual increase for that particular household, assuming that there's an eighty thousand, three forty-six, the average value of that home, that would be paying eight dollars and three cents more per year. If you're raising two cents, it's sixteen oh-seven. Three cents, twenty-four, ten. Four cents, thirty-two, fourteen. Five cents, forty-seventeen. And five point zero one eighty-eight, which is the increase that would, up to the, for the rollback rate, would be forty dollars and thirty-two cents annually. So I would like to go over other items that I have. What I'm going to be passing out to you, I'm going to be passing out two sheets. One shows the exemption chart that the city of Brownsville honors its taxpayers. And I'll, I'll go ahead and pass this out, and we'll go over it. The single sheet shows all the taxing entities in Cameron County, and what they offer as far as exemptions. Brownsville, for instance, which is listed on the top, if you're over sixty-five, you get a six thousand dollar homestead exemption right away if you reach sixty-five. Then in the next column, over sixty-five or disability, there's additional exemptions that the city of Brownsville offers. And that's based on the disability of the individual. Also, that particular column that's in yellow, if you're over sixty-five and you're disabled, your value of your homestead is frozen until you die. In other words, from sixty-five on, properties may be increased. Because you're over sixty-five or you're disabled, your properties remain frozen. So therefore, your taxes remain, remain the same. That's something that we, the city of Brownsville, offers. On the other page, the other handout that I gave you, gives you information as to what the city of Brownsville, besides the particular, the information that I gave you on this particular sheet, it also says, on the first one, we have abatements. We have two abatements, we generate, that, I guess we lose forty-four thousand, nine sixty, because we, we don't tax on that particular property. Then you have charitable properties, you have community housing, you have disabilities, you have disability veterans. The main one that's, that's there is exempt property. Properties that are under the school district, the university, the city of Brownsville, P U B, all those, all those particular assets or properties are exempt.
But that's by law.
Yes, by law. But one in particular, on the second page, you have the free port exemption. The free port, right now, we are giving up nine hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. What's the free port? Free port exemption is the, the, the properties or goods that are not taxed if they're on, 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 now, this is mainly the maquiladoras that are, that are on, that are, that are, that are not moving, that are, that are, I can't even call the title, but it's, those are monies that we, we do not tax. And, and this are items that, that you, like, if maquiladora has parts that they're building, that particular part is not taxed until it's put together.
Isn't that part of the.
Free on board, like, yeah. So that's a main one, nine hundred and eighteen thousand dollars that the city of Brownsville, few years ago, offered that free port to encourage business in town, especially to drive economic development activity. And as a result of the maquiladoras began to increase production here in Matamoros. And of course, they had their, their plants here in Brownsville that they, that they took advantage of. But those are some of the exemptions that the city of Brownsville honors to its current taxpayers.
You're not proposing to change them, Bill, right?
No, no, just to show you what's out there. Now, the, this is, this is a public hearing on the, on the particular tax rate that we were discussing earlier. It's, it's up open to the public.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody from the audience wants to speak out on this subject matter? Please state your name. And stick to the public hearing subject, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor, citizens of Brownsville. My name is Fernando Ruiz. As Mr. Gonzalez has shown us in the past twelve years, or whatever, that we have a flexibility in the, in the increase of the tax rate. There is a certain amount that they can only charge you, the citizens of Brownsville. They cannot go over it, because they don't want for you to participate in the process of placing the item in referendum. And so what they do is keep it at the minimum. But by the same token, we have to address the issue that when the movement of the five cents, either up, plus or minus, the appraisal district continued to increase the value of the properties. So what are we trying to do here? We're trying to use mathematics to misguide the citizens of Brownsville? If you raise the taxes and the appraisal district raises the value of the properties, you're doing it twice. You're raising the taxes twice. Now, in two thousand and four, when the bubble burst, I addressed Mr. Falc, Totoso Gomez, which is the chief of pressure in San Benito. You have to bring down the values of the properties, because this is what the economies of scale say, supply and demand. There is no demand, the price of properties have fallen, the equity that you have in your homes, you have lost. And we're continuing to increase the value of properties when you should have decreased it six years ago. And then if you want to work your way up now. Why did this not happen? Because we would lose revenues for the city, or for the other public entities. I called the Department of the Comptroller's Office in Austin, asking, you know, what's happening here? Well, it's up to the public entities. Well, the majority of the public entities are people that we have voted into office. You're supposed to protect us. And what we have always is an increase in taxes, and increase in taxes, and increase in taxes. And the people have no more money to eat. They don't have any money for gas. Insurance wants to go up, the telephone company is going up. What are you all doing with our money? Because, you know, if, I was reviewing the telephone bill the other day, and we have a certain, a dollar fifty-something that goes to the municipality. How many people have telephones in the city of Brownsville? Are we, are we accountable for that money? We check the public utility, we pay taxes on what we consume. The public utility is not deregulated, because it belongs to us. But yet, we have, we, we have to pay taxes on our own doing, on what we build for us, so it would be cheaper for the citizens of Brownsville to enjoy life. Twenty-five dollars, let's say that you pay in taxes. Now multiply that by fifty thousand numbers, fifty thousand customers that the P U B has. How many millions of dollars are those? Where's this money? We have money from the telephone company, from the cable company. I don't know, we have it from the cell phones. Because the cellphone business is supposed to be for the city of Brownsville. But apparently, the politicians at the time decided that we're going to give it to one politician. And we're out of that money also. Because the airspace on top of our properties belongs to us also, all the way to the stratosphere. Why did those politicians, why did those politicians give that airspace to that person, that concession?
Mr. Reese.
Millions of dollars.
There's other people who want to speak.
Well, I understand, sir.
Would you focus on this?
Well, I am, because this is what we're talking, where's all this money going, you know? Why does our taxes continue to increase? How come we do not follow the economies of scale? When the prices of the properties should have come down, they did not come down. And you know, what are we trying to do? And I'm trying to tell you that you people are responsible. We have elected you all to public office and all the public entities, because right now, we're addressing only the city. But there's six or seven other public entities that we have, are they going to increase their taxes also? So you're talking here about fifty dollars, but when you get them all together, you're talking more than a hundred dollars or whatever. So really, are you sup?
Are you for, you're against, you're for or against this proposal?
Say something real quick.
Wait a second. Mr. Reese, are you for or against this proposal? You've been talking, talking, talking.
I'm talking to the people of Brownsville to wake up, sir. Because, you know, I can't be here all my life, and them just sitting at home, they need, they need to pay attention to what's going on in the city.
Let me say something real quick. We haven't raised taxes. Cameron, Cameron Appraisal District is a state entity. They set the, they picked up the property taxes.
Sir, you're wrong, sir, you're wrong.
It's a Cameron County entity, sir.
It's not a Cameron County entity. It's not a Cameron County.
It was formed by all the public entities.
We appoint the members of the Cameron County. Okay, let's get, let's get back to this over here, okay?
Well, we're talking about taxes, sir.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate, and I appreciate, okay?
You have your respect, you okay?
I respect you, and I appreciate.
You're enticing to make a citizen's arrest.
I appreciate, and I think, I think.
You're out of order.
You're speaking very eloquently against taxes. That's what I gather you're doing, okay?
I'm trying to tell the people, you know, that they have to wake up and see.
But we also have to take into consideration wherever the people want to speak, Mr. Reese. So let's focus on all of this.
You know what, Mr. Madal, let me tell you, sir. I hope you don't run for election, because you'll never get re-elected again.
That's fine.
You know what I mean? And let me tell you, sir, do not violate my constitutional rights, okay?
Nobody's violating your constitutional rights, Mr. Reese, but you're rambling on.
You always come out with your, you know what?
You're rambling on, sir.
You always come out with, you know what? You know what, sir?
Let me read, let me read to you what it's about. Let me read, let me read to you what it's about.
And I come here because I've done my homework. And I'm trying to tell the people that how come in two thousand and four, when the bubble burst or whenever, the price of the appraisals didn't come down?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reese.
I'm sure you understand that, don't you? You're an appraiser.
Yes, sir. Let me, let me read the item so everybody will understand what the subject matter is. It's first public hearing to discuss the proposed two thousand and ten Avalon tax rate for fiscal year two thousand and ten of point seven zero seven seven four four per one hundred dollar valuation, which is seven point six three percent over the effective tax rate of point six five seven five five six per hundred dollar valuation. That's the subject we're on tonight. Not about who handles the cellular phone towers or what the public entities do with their money or the appraisal district. We're here on this proposed tax rate increase.
Accountability is gone, sir.
Okay, sir. I want to hear from the audience, with all due respect, if you're for or against it. This is your time to speak out on this issue. Mr. De Leon, please go forward.
Honorable Mayor, honorable City Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Augusto De Leon, citizen of Brownsville, Texas. I'd like to speak against the the tax increase. Basically, because I checked the the write-up on the proposed budget, and it says, new positions requested to the tune of two million dollars. Right now is not the time to be adding new positions. We need to be able to live within our means, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. We need to work within the proposed budget, as there won't be, and that way, won't be a reason to increase the taxes. Now, if we need police and firemen, maybe we can go and look at the grants the state government to help us, federal government stimulus funds might be available. That would be a possibility to fund whatever needs to be with a fire and a police that are definitely needed.
Mr. De Leon, I think you're getting a hit. That's item six. We'll be discussing that item six.
I was not aware. I mean, I'm just-
What you're saying, what you're saying is is applicable to item six. It's right on target.
I'm just talking about suggestions.
But I, I understand you're against this tax rate increase.
Yes, sir. Okay. Yes, sir. And and unfortunately, you all will notice if you looked at your budget, proposed budget, the major things that are eating it up on retirement on general fund is over nine million dollars. Hospitalization insurance is-
Can I ask you to hold that thought and and bring it up in item six? Because that's where it applies?
That'd be fine. Whatever.
That's, that's, that's what we're going to be discussing next.
Anyway, I just wanted to make a point that if we can cut down on on added expenses, added things that we might be able to get by, I don't think the citizens need to be taxed anymore. Thank you very much.
I appreciate that. And I welcome you to come back on item six to discuss that. Yes, sir?
May I make a comment, please?
Yes, sir.
Nobody here, or at least not until the vote, is planning on raising anybody's taxes. That's just the way the item is written. Nobody here, sitting here for the last seven years, has raised taxes. On the contrary, we've lowered. So please understand that the fact that the item has to be written that way because of law is written in that way. But please don't think that we're about to raise your taxes to seventy cents. If we haven't done it in the past, trust me, I don't think we're going to do it this year. But please, don't take it as we're here tonight to raise your taxes to seventy cents. That's just the way it has to be written. Thank you.
Commissioner, I have to disagree with you. The the item, if it was, if it was intended to be based on the effective tax rate, it would not reach seventy cents. This right here is proposing a tax increase to seventy cents.
The item is.
Yeah, the item is.
The item.
But I mean, to to comply with the standard law wording would be less than point seven, not seventy. Right now, what what the what the finance director is asking us to consider up to seventy.
May I say something? The the budget that was filed at the city secretary's office includes only the effective tax rate.
Yeah, that's right. But this, this item here exceeds the effective tax rate with the budget. So you're asking here, by this item, to increase taxes to seventy?
Like he does every year, right?
No, but this is not the effective rate.
In other words, we're going through the motions that we, the budget gets adopted, scheduled for adoption on September the twentieth. We have three more budget hearings till then. We don't want to be here on on, let's say, one of you or some of you decide, well, maybe we need to raise it a half a penny. We couldn't do that because we didn't have the public hearings that were required prior to the adoption. And that's the only reason why we're having this particular public hearing.
Okay. You're here on the tax rate increase to seventy?
Yes, sir. Roberto Este, twelve twenty, Kay Pluton, Galaxia. Majority of the people in my district, and I call it my district now because they come to ask me questions about what's going on with politics, are not very happy with a tax increase. They like to ask, they ask me, what are we getting for our taxes if they increase it? Are we going to get better police protection? Are we going to get better fire protection, ambulance protection? And sometimes they get to see things that I don't get to see, in which they are not happy with the services being provided by the city. I come here as a taxpayer. I called the Cameron County Appraiser this afternoon, and I asked that question, did generally, did the property values go up in the City of Brownsville? And they told me yes. So that is an indirect tax. You don't control that, they control that. You control how much you're going to tax. So in hand in hand, those are double taxes. Can the city, if it's going to increase the taxes, if, I said if, start cutting more in their budgets? My proposals on some of the things are hard, because people are suffering in Brownsville. You have to draw a line on this answer, on the taxes. Increase the bus fare by fifty cents. We are losing a lot of money because the city has to put a lot of money into the bus system. You know that. The airport, you have to privatize something down there, and you have to privatize probably the fire department, because it's killing us down there, and it's losing a lot of money down there. You, you can, suggestions on the taxes?
Let me, please, give me the courtesy. What you, what you're suggesting goes to public, item six. We'll be discussing the budget. Your items are very well, they're good. I'm not, I'm not saying they're bad. But I'm saying, let's get to the discussion of the budget, item six, to where we can hear those things, because that's where we're going to have this discussion on the budget. Now, if you could stick to the tax rate increase, whether you're for or against it, I would appreciate it very much. Then when, when we go to item six, you bring in your list, your laundry list of what you you recommend, which I think some are very good, worth worthwhile listening to. But let's put it all in the right item.
I apologize on that part, sir, because I didn't think we were going to overlap the things I have written, and I didn't see the whole agenda.
Let's stick to the, to the tax rate. You know, we, we, here is a proposal to raise it up to point seven zero seven seven four four. I assume you're against it like everybody else.
Yes. But you could increase it only one penny, two pennies, three pennies, four pennies, up to five pennies, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Your voice, your, your, I mean, would you favor that?
And the highest point would be seventy cents, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the majority of the people I spoke to are saying to you, please, be responsible of how much it's going to cost them, not you, because you're the ones who spend that money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Este. Appreciate that. And we welcome, and we welcome everybody to come and comment during the public hearing for the proposed fiscal year two thousand and eleven.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Real quick, Pete, if we were to raise it seventy cents, to seventy cents, five cents, the average income of thirty thousand, I think you showed it to me before, what would they be paying extra a year?
He just showed it.
Forty dollars, approximately forty dollars.
Forty dollars a year, which comes up to how much a day?
I hope that, on the average.
Yeah, how much does that come out a day?
About two point four million.
How much does that come out a day?
I have a calculator. I just don't have a calculator. But it's, it's a small amount.
It's a small amount.
Okay. Please, let's stick to the budget, what it says right here, the proposed tax rate increase, please.
Okay. My name is Letitia Perez-Garcoria, and I know this is a comp-
Budget, we'll take it up on the next one, okay?
Yeah. I know this is complicated, and this is just a a projected thing that that you've got to do before you make a decision. But at the present time, and I believe that we're all in the same boat, we haven't changed. We all have the same problems ahead of us. I think that raising taxes, one, two, three, five, whatever cents you want to raise it, it would only hurt us so much more. I mean, there's, there's not a question about that. I don't think there's anybody that can say, oh, I'm so well off that I've got to, you know. I think that that this needs to be looked at more rigorously, more, more carefully. And and look at the region that we live in. It's very difficult, very difficult for for people to make ends meet. It's just, it's just a fact of life down here. And and raising your, our taxes would would just put us, the public, deeper in the hole. People can't make ends meet. Gasoline is high. Your taxes are high. You go to the hospital, and you're, and and the the amounts of money that you have to pay out of your twenty percent. There's so many things that we can talk about. But you know what I think? We're not talking about it. We're just putting the hatchet down, and where it falls, it falls. That's not fair. That's not fair to us. We need to be, let's look at how we can help it. It it's not unsolvable. It's not unsolvable. It can be done. If we as homemakers can make our budget, and we can come out with a few pennies-
Let's get back to the tax rate increase, not the budget. The budget's the next thing.
Okay. The thing is, it's going to hurt us. Bottom line, it's going to hurt us, and I'm against it, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Letitia. Thank you very much. Okay. Do we have any more on the, on the subject matter of the tax rate?
My name's Dutch Fisher. I'm very proud to be a resident Brownsville, and I'm totally against any kind of increase in the effective tax rate. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Brief, short, and sweet, and to the point. Thank you. Anybody else on this proposed tax rate increase? Can we please stick to the subject matter of the tax rate increase? If you want to comment on the budget, please wait to the next item, sir.
Hi, Thede Flores, U.S. citizen taxpayer. I was just going to comment, I'm against any tax increases. Maybe we need to see how we're spending our money. I checked some of the city check register, and I noticed some unquestionable spending. For example, prepaid legal services. Why? If you have three or four attorneys, I'm losing track now. Why are you paying paying for prepaid legal services? Why are you paying for a membership at Gold's Gym? Why are there checks paid to Brownsville? I see, maybe that's part of the problem, that you're misspending the money.
Can I say something?
Maybe we need an independent audit or the state attorney?
Is there payroll deductions, payroll employees are paying for it? Payroll deductions.
But that's a budget.
The check is issued to the-
I, I, be, be-
If they would only call me, mayor.
What part do you all not understand? What it says right here. Can we stick to the item?
Yes. But that contributes to the reason why you want to increase taxes.
You have the opportunity to discuss the budget on this next item, Thede. Why so, what's so difficult?
But that contributes to the increase of taxes because I'm against it!
Okay, great. Thank you.
Greatly against it.
Thank you.
And I can't wait for May of two thousand and eleven to vote everybody out.
Thank you. Thank you. Maybe you'll do us a favor. Who knows? Okay. Is there anybody here on the tax rate that can stick like this gentleman, Dutch Fisher, did, to the point? Now, we're going to go next to the items on the budget. We welcome people to come and give input on the budget. We welcome you. But at this rate, we'll be here till doomsday. If people can't follow and read the instructions, right here is very simple. God, a six-year-old can do it.
Your opinion of votes around it?
Okay. This is a public hearing. Do we have anybody else? If not, let's close the public hearing.
Item six.
May I just have one comment to make? And that was to one of the public comments from the gentleman who who lives in in my district, or district four, our district, I should say. The issue of raising bus, the bus fares, I think is a wrong decision. It's the wrong way to go. We don't want to raise taxes, yet he's suggesting to raise the fees on the bus. These are the same folks that would have the most difficult time paying the increase in fee and paying the increase of taxes. These are the same folks that ride the bus to the clinic, or to the local supermarket. Why would we do that, when their cost is 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 so high already as it is? So I just wanted to go on record, because so did he, that I I disagree with that at that point alone.
Okay, we can take that up on the next item, Commissioner. Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing on this tax rate? We have a motion by Commissioner Semora, can we have, oh, I'm sorry, please.
Yeah.
On the subject matter of the tax rate, please.
Yeah. Can I make sure, I I do this, I think I feel like I do this every single year. But three years ago, the city commission voted to increase taxes. And and I I deeply think of the world of Commissioner Longoria, but this is a fact that needs to be stated because he continuously states that you haven't raised taxes. And I believe you even made the motion to raise taxes that year. And it is, and it-
Wait, wait, Commissioner, Commissioner, Commissioner. Wait, 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 Commissioner. Please, let's, let's, let's handle this. Look, we're not here to debate.
No, no, this isn't debate. It's just for state fact.
Let's stick to, okay. I understand what you're saying. That's based on the effective tax rate that requires for it to go up, to collect the same amount as last year.
But it's still, it's still above the tax rate increase.
Technically, you're right.
I know I am.
You're right. Technically, but let me tell you something. It's a pittance. It's a pittance.
I don't care.
It's not a rate increase proposal. It's a ta, effective tax rate to maintain the same level of income. That's what it is. And that's a technical thing of, of Mr. Perez, that you're using to-
No.
To to say that we're raising taxes when we're really not. Okay. But this right here, we're on the effective tax rate. You're for or against it, Mr. Perez?
I'm, I'm actually against, you know, raising it to seventy cents. But wait, no, you closed public comments because of misinformation being stated. He just stated something as misinformation. It could be easily corrected just by having Mr. Gonzalez go up there and show the slide that he just showed, maybe about fifteen minutes ago. I'm just stating that we can make supposed misinformation. You all can too. I'm just correcting the record. I just, I'm-
Oh, yes. Yes.
That's it.
You're so right.
Yeah, I am. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, can we close the public hearing now?
Semmel, second.
We have closed by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This is not an actual item. It's just a public hearing. Now, the sixth item on the agenda is the fourth public hearing. Would you read it, City Secretary?
Item six, fourth public hearing, to discuss the city's proposed fiscal, fiscal year two thousand and eleven budget.
This is on the budget, ladies and gentlemen? We welcome everybody to give their comments. This is a public hearing.
Go proceed, deep, or- Hello, Mayor, members of the city commission. The budget was filed at the city secretary's office on August the twentieth. It will sit there at the city secretary's office for thirty days for public inspection. The budget was also, is on file on our webpage. It's a, everything that's in this particular book can be found on the, on our webpage. And by the way, we are one of the most transparent cities in the state. We were recently awarded a, by the state of Texas for being very transparent. We, we have the-
You'll get your turn. This is a public hearing. But let the gentleman give the presentation. Give him the courtesy, please.
We have the, our audit report on, on the internet. We have our budget on the internet. And we also have our check register in the internet. Now, speaking of the red check register, many times, we issue payments to certain vendors, like in the case that just came up right now. But those are all related to pub, to payroll deductions. The employee is paying for these expenses. But obviously, we deduct the, the expense or the, from the, from the payroll check, and then we pay the vendor. That's what that was for. The tax rate, again, we've, we've gone through this before. The effective tax rate is sixty-five, seventy-five, fifty-six.
Go back to effective tax rate. Explain to, to the citizens why the effective tax rate is adjusted every year based on how the assessments are and that. So people understand, it's not something that we're proposing, a ra, a rate increase or a decrease. It just happens because of the flow of cash comes in based on the assessment.
Thank you, Mayor. The effective tax rate is the calculated rate- The effective tax rate is the calculated rate that gives you the same amount of revenues that you receive from the prior year. Assuming that all, all the, uh, uh, tax, the properties were the same.
So we don't control that, the city commission does not control that effective tax rate? We don't control it, is that right?
Right.
Right. I want that clear.
And the tax roll had a very small, they had a small increase, but it was a very small increase between 2,000, tax year 2009 and tax year 2010.
But that is just to maintain the same amount of cash flow that we had the same year prior?
Now, what I'm saying is that the valuations in the city, some properties were lowered and obviously some were, were increased. The average increase was about point five, less than half, less than 1%. There was an increase though, but it was a very small increase. In years past, we've had increases of double digits. 10%, 12%, when the economy was very strong, we had 5%. Uh, lately, the last two years, it's been a slow growth. The, we did, uh, this is what we had earlier, this is what's in the budget. We have a 4, 4,379, 230. Since then, we've made some adjustments. And one of the adjustment that has been made is on the sales tax. Now, uh, on the sales tax, if you go back, let me go back to the previous slide. We had 23,355. That's the amount of money that we normally, uh, are going to be collected. We felt we were going to be collected in 2011, but we're taking sort of a risk. We are gonna go back to the same number of, hopefully, the, the economy increases and we're gonna use the 24,011. So, that's the change that has been made from the time that this budget was, was filed at the city secretary's office. So now our, our deficit is, instead of 4.379, it's now 3,723,230. Now, going back to this particular, uh, which is, uh, something that we need to th- talk about is. These are expenses that have been made with the assumption that we were going to issue the CO for 2010. Uh, we have stopped, uh, expend, uh, spending some of the money that was authorized by Resolution 2009, 017. That was approved by the city commission on, uh, on March 3rd, 2009. Uh, we have spent 2,409,767.5 on those particular expenditures. Uh, the third column shows the deadline that we must have in order for the general fund to get reimbursed from CO proceeds. If there's no CO proceeds after that particular deadline, the general fund is going to have to absorb those costs. The first one that comes, uh, early is the, the, uh, the, uh, engineering at landfill on, uh, December the 3rd. And then you also have December the 19th, the police vehicles. If we don't resolve the lawsuit that we have right now with the COs, those expenses will be charged to the general fund and that's going to reduce our fund balance. Uh, just, just to note that, 2,409,000, um, on, on, on what we're phasing. And those were all expenses that were, that we actually needed. We needed, uh, expenses for the ambulances, for, uh, engineering, uh, landfill improvements, police vehicles, traffic control devices and, and also traffic vehicles that have already been purchased.
So, the 4.4 million dollar shortfall P does not take into account the 2.4?
No, sir, no, sir.
So then we're looking at a 6.8?
If we do not issue the COs, yes.
Okay.
Most of the items that, that are here have been, uh, discussed with you in previous, uh, public hearings. Uh, we haven't had that much change. Uh, we did, we did decrease the, uh, the, uh, overall departments by 10%. That has already been done in our budget. Uh, so we're, our sales tax is still, uh, critical. We, we saw, uh, two increases the last two months, but it's, the, the increase has been very small. And again, we're, we're comparing a very poor year in 2009 versus 2010. So, uh, right now, we're, we're experiencing a, a, a decrease in our sales tax about 3.3% compared to la- last year. Uh, and the other area that we see as a problem area is the, the bridge crossings. Uh, we are down right now 6.5 from a, from a bad year last year and, and we're still down. So those are some of the things that, uh, that, that we are, we'll probably be looking at it. We've got three other meetings that we're gonna meet. And hopefully, we can either generate more revenues on some of the things that we have proposed or, or start cutting more, more of the expenses. Um, we are, we actually, we are looking forward to our, towards a tax increase, but if it, if it's not there, then, then we'll look at other sources, uh, which have been brought to you before in one of our previous meeting that we had on August the 17th. It's a public hearing, uh, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Pete, our finance director. Uh, as you all heard, we're looking at a projected maybe, uh, shortfall of 6.8 million. Um, we welcome input from the community, uh, any suggestions or tell us where we can get revenues or what is it that you all recommend? What you'd like to see? Uh, how many people would like to speak on this matter? This is a public hearing? I'd like to know how many people want to speak so we can allot some time. Can you stand up over here so we, you know how many people? One, two, three, four. This is your chance, people. Five, five, anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna allow, and I think this is generous, five minutes per person. Okay? Would you please time them, uh, and this is on the budget? And this is, uh, your time to speak on what you think we should be doing.
As far as the 50 cents increase.
Before you start, um, I want, I wanna, I wanna echo what Commissioner Longoria said. I don't think there is any movement to increasing the tax rate here, okay?
No.
So go on.
No, don't say it. Roberto Reste, Galaxia, as far as the 50 cents, sometimes a commissioner needs to live in the area. A lot of people have four or five cars there. And they can get transportation, sir.
You're saying I don't live in the area?
Okay, you don't live in the area, sir.
Let him speak, Commissioner, let him speak and then you can.
You need to, uh, look yourself, sir, in the mirrors.
Don't tell me what I need to do.
Oh.
Commissioner, Commissioner.
You should be the last person to tell me what I need to do.
Oh, yes. I think as a taxpayer, we elected you. I didn't vote for you, I, I ran against you.
Didn't you lose against him? Okay.
Just like you, sir.
Oh, you lost against him, that's all. Okay. Please go forward, Mr. Reste. Make your recommendations.
My recommendations is, the bus system is losing money. And you can see, talk to Mr. Gonzalez, he knows how much is done. If you want to give everybody money to pay, why don't you just give them the money? Give them a $20 voucher to everybody who takes the bus. But we have to be, people are making the sacrifice. 50 cents increase because we need to help the bus system and you know it's losing money. Number two, the ambulance system.
How much you recommending?
A 50 cents increase. The golf course is losing money. You need to have, realign it. It has to be realigned somehow. If it's not making money, please, you gotta look in there. The airport, major loss. They say it's because the, uh, fire department. I don't know if that's true, but it is. Why don't you privatize that fire department there only and have it privatized so we can make some money there? That's a good idea. The ambulance service, we're losing a lot of money in the ambulance service. Harlingen has a privatized system. You know they have the helicopter, they don't want to bring the helicopter down here. By cutting out the ambulance service, sir, I know 24 people or more will lose their jobs, but think how much money can be saved. Can they provide? They'll be paying more taxes because they gotta come here and set up. So take a look at the overall view about an ambulance service private, being privatized. It would help. You can cut down a lot, sir. It would be great. As far as the gov, uh, the sports park, you're putting too much money there. It's just too much. There's something that doesn't jive in my mind what's going on at that sports park. That needs millions and millions of dollars. And that's something that needs to be cut down. If the lights don't need to be there, I pass through there at night when I go to Harlingen, my goodness, they have more lights there than some subdivisions. So we have to look at that. We gotta look at how we're gonna cut things down. And you can cut down by utilities because utility is one of the biggest thing we have here in Brownsville that we have to pay for. It comes out of taxpayers' money.
Let me ask you something, Mr. Reste. Would, would you be fine with the city not having to pay utilities to PUB? That would save 2, 3 million dollars. We pay that to PUB.
Yes, sir. But the thing is, yes, it's a good question, sir, but the problem is.
It's just five minutes, let him speak and then we get a address.
But the problem is.
I'm asking a question.
But the problem is, sir, that we own PUB.
Yes, we do own PUB.
So we can do what we want to do on PUB.
Continue, Mr. Reste, continue.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Um, we need to look at the lawyers. We've got too many. We need to cut them down. I'm sorry. If you look at the, how much money we're paying for the four or five lawyers, I don't know, about 200,000, 250? We can save some money there.
But you're suing us, so we need lawyers to, for all the suing you're doing. Commissioner, let him speak, this is a public. He's making points that he's suing the city of Brownsville, we need to get lawyers. Do you want to be here till 2 o'clock in the morning, honestly? What are you gaining, what are you gaining by getting into a debate? People can understand what he's about. It's his opportunity to speak, let him speak. He's got a right to have his own opinions. He shouldn't have to be attacking anybody. Let him, please.
I've been asked.
Otherwise, you could be here till 2 o'clock in the morning. Go ahead.
All I'm asking is, you gotta look at more cuts within ourselves. If a county could do that and not increase the taxes and they had to slash, the city can do the same thing. People do suffer, sir, and they do cut down. Now remember, there is an increase coming up in water and sewer rates and they say that's gonna affect even the poor.
Thank you, Mr. Reste. In fact, you made some very good suggestions and I'm sure that, that been talked about with management. Uh, thank you. Uh, next, Mr. Mrs. Ros- Rosoria, Letty Rosoria.
Regarding this, um, Letty Rosoria. Um, regarding the budget, some other things have been, um, um, talked about and I talked about it as well as, um, uh, maybe looking at, um, what Mr. Uresti talked about, the attorneys and so forth. And, and it might be good to look at it. I don't know. I'm not the expert on that. But that's not what I'm concerned with. The budget needs to be readdressed. Uh, my concern is the handouts to organizations. I think the, it, the city, uh, is excessive on this. You need to dec-.
What's that?
The city is excessive on giving out, uh, monies to organizations. You need to dis- decrease the numbers of the, uh, um, of the money that's giving out to individual entities. And I think that it would be, um, wise, if not effective, if, if not, if an entity comes to the commission and says, "I need X amount of dollars", just like I did last year because I have, uh, these problems, uh, in my, um, uh, business. I think that these entities need to fundraise. They need to do something on their part. Free money is not even considered, free money is not even appreciated unless it costs you to, 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 uh, to, uh, get from point A to point B. And it's gonna cost you on your, on your side, you're gonna appreciate it. But if it's gonna be free money by the city or by the county or by whoever it is, it's not gonna work. It hasn't worked. Not to this, not to this point because we're seeing that, we're seeing that everybody's coming up here and they're saying, "Well, I've got this problem going on." We understand that. So do other, so, so do other entities. But why not put your fair share? I fundraise 50%. So I'm going to the commission and saying, "What I asked for last year was only 50%. Now, I'm gonna raise those 50% on my own, so I'm not gonna be a burden to the commission and to the taxpayers." What's wrong with that? What's wrong with, with empowering people and, and, and putting them accountable? Help us out too. We've helped you throughout. Now it's your turn to help out. Fundraising is not that difficult. People are friendly in Texas. People are friendly in, in, in Brownsville. People like to party. People like good times. I do. So does everybody else, right? So I think that, that, that if you get a little bit of fundraising, it can be anything. You know, you can be very creative, but then again, then again, I think that they need to do something on their part. And then let the commission, let the taxpayer say, "You know what? They're working right alongside us and you know what? It's gonna work, it's gonna be a win-win situation for all of us." We need to really look at it, not for the negativity out of it. It's because we all have to pull this wagon. If we do not pull this wagon, we're gonna go downstairs. And you know, it's not, it's not nice. I don't like that. Because we want prosperity, we want education to continue, we want entities to come to Brownsville and, 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 and help us out. But these organizations, too much, overkill.
Thank you. Thank you, Letty. Uh, yes, Commissioner?
Just a point of clarification, I'm a strong believer of fundraising, but hotel occupancy revenue, there are statutes that say that it can only be used for certain things like, um, putting heads in beds. So we can't use them for streets, we can't use them for other city things. Unfortunately, I would love to use that for, for those things, but we can, we're unable to.
Wait a second, before you get started, so we're not eating up your five minutes, Commissioner, actually, you wanna say something? I was gonna go back to Pete about PUB. They have record numbers this year and I know other cities have to transfer at 14 to 15%. Has the city thought about doing that?
We, we've, uh, we've, we're trying to do everything we can to make adjustments to our budget in a positive way. This is just one of the options with tax rate increase. But yes, we have talked to them, we've also, are, as, as you saw, one of the options is for us to go to PUB and request funding as we did last year to be able to, uh, uh, balance our budget this year. So yes, we have, and yes, we are.
Thank you. Anybody else from the commission before, uh, Thede gets started? Okay, we have a projected 6.4, no, 6.8 shortfall. 6.8 million dollars, 800,000. Okay, 6,800,000 dollars shortfall. So if anybody can give us the secret of where to get that money to balance a budget, that'd be great. We've got more needs.
Sure.
Sir, you're out of order, you're out of order. You'll get your turn. You'll get your turn.
Tell me.
If anybody can help us get those revenues so we could not have the shortfall, it would be appreciated. The, uh, the, the shortfall here is gonna be compounded next year with, uh, civil service, uh, increases due to contracts that we have to honor. So the hole is getting bigger. If you notice in 2007, I said this was gonna happen and it's getting bigger and bigger and bigger. Let me just say something on that real quick, Mayor. Yeah, sure. Now, you keep bringing up the fact that you tried to have a solution back three years ago and I was there with you. But it wasn't, there was a quick fix to, to, for the police and fire and to, to, to get fees for them to where they could be self-sustaining with the money we're raising with the $3 thing that you mentioned. But it all got thrown to the wayside when you started adding money for the dogs, money for other projects. If you would've just stuck to, uh, doing this for the police and fire and enforcement, I think you would've had it. But you started throwing in the dogs, you started throwing in other, other, um, projects and other people you wanted to fund and that's when we lost it. So when you say you had the solution, you had, I give you, I give it up, you had a little bit of the solution until you added other projects and other, uh, uh, ways to, to, to get the $3. That, that hurt and you have to admit it hurt, yes or no? I was with you. First of all, you got it all wrong, Commissioner. Come on. No, you got it all wrong. Because from the very, and Pete can tell you and anybody can tell you, from the very beginning, I was very transparent. And I said, "We have an overpopulation pet problem. We have a, an animal shelter that's not built to compliance of, of, for a city this size. It's, it's built under capacity, it has a capacity of 70, uh, kennels when it should have 300. And we're slaughtering about 7,000 pets." That was one issue of concern, not just to me, to the community that I brought and I sought a solution to address. The second issue was public safety, knowing that the cost of, uh... The second issue was public safety, knowing that the cost of equipment that they needed and all that stuff, ambulances. And the third issue was the, the arts that were struggling and are still struggling. So at no time was it changed. I proposed from day one, three dollars, three dollars, okay? For those three things. It never changed. I never wavered. To solve, those aren't my problems. That's the city's problem. I'm not benefiting from it. It's not my project. It's a city's project, all three of them, okay? All three of them, okay? We've lost about, oh, I would say eight million dollars since then. I would say about that, Pete, with the three dollars. So I think, you know, we're looking at six point eight million dollar shortage here. Those three dollars, I got criticized so much, think were to ease the burden we have now. And I said, "The hole was gonna get bigger and bigger." And I heard here in the commission, they were gonna come up with an alternative solution three years ago. And today, I haven't heard an alternative solution. But I'm not whining about it. I failed. I moved on. We do golf tournaments. We try to do the best we can. I try to do the best I can for the arts, so does everybody. But we're not thought, we're ignoring the problem. The problem's still there. Nobody wants to pitch in. Nobody wants, you know, people that was opposition to three mislead dollars, which is thirty-six dollars a year from each user, and right now, we wouldn't be having these problems, I think. But I never wavered, Commissioner. It was always from the very beginning.
Okay, now, your five minutes. Please proceed.
Okay, federal Florida's taxpayer. One, I'm sure you all have heard, one man's demise is another man's opportunity. If you would take into account all those states that are in the hole, especially the ones that are Democrat-controlled, like New York, New Jersey, Massachusetts, those companies out there are, are swimming in overtaxation. If you would approach them, don't you think they would come down here? The, the housing is a lot affordable, more affordable than in those states. I mean, those states are suffering because they're, they're just been overly taxed, and we don't have that problem down here, not yet. But why aren't we approaching those companies to come to the, to a very beautiful area, comfortable, beautiful climate? We have beaches. Well, we used to have Mexico, but now it's kind of dangerous to go over there. I'm sure some of them would come down here. Why aren't they being approached? That's a very viable solution. I mean, they're, they're hurting up there. Those companies are hurting. Don't you think they would want to come to an area where there's no state income tax? The property values down here are very affordable. I mean, their, their little shacks cost four hundred thousand dollars up there. That's a mansion down here. I'm sure they wouldn't even spend all their monies buying a very expensive home. They're gonna have extra monies. So that's a very viable. I mean, approach the states where they've been totally Democrat-controlled, and they're totally in the toilet. Bring those companies down here. Getting back to the misspending of money. I was, as I said, I was looking at the city tax check register, and why prepaid legal services? I thought we had attorneys to take care of legal matters. And then, the good government firm, why? I know it's Mr. Saucy's firm. He's supposed to get paid a certain amount every, once a week. There's checks, there's been some checks issued to him, two checks in one week. Even in one, on March fourth, he got issued a check over seven thousand dollars.
What does this have to do with the budget, Mayor? Why do you let it keep going?
Is this line item or what? Frankly, Mr. Mayor, frankly, Mr. Mayor, I'd, I'd be happy to answer that.
Investigation needs to be done, and independent audit needs to be conducted.
If you'd like, I'd like to explain it.
Stop for five minutes so he can explain to her, because he's gonna explain it to her, I'm sorry, to Ms. Flores, and to everybody who's been wondering what's going on. Please, give him the right explanation so they'll understand.
Sure. Okay, first of all, in regard to the prepaid legal services, that has nothing to do with us. That's a payroll deduction. That's an employee benefit. Has absolutely nothing to do with the city attorney's department. That is a payroll deduction that goes to a prepaid legal plan to provide legal benefits to city employees. That has absolutely nothing to do with the city attorney's office, which provides legal services to the city of Brownsville.
Why bring that type of benefit for city attorney, I mean, city employees? That doesn't make sense.
Okay, but they pay. That doesn't, that's not city money. That comes from the, that's a payroll deduction from the, from the void.
You come here, you know, if you had that down and asked somebody, they would probably explain it to you.
Okay, in regard, in regard-
Sir, I don't have something on you. I work twelve hours a day.
Ma'am, I'd be happy to address your other point, too. When, when I was hired as city attorney, I was outside litigation counsel, was handling four or five cases already, okay? And I was billing the city at an hourly rate. What I did is, I told the city, I said, "Look, there's three or four of these cases that I'll be happy to come in and handle, basically wrapped up for free, and not charge the city any additional money, okay?" But there was one piece of litigation, that was Construction Act piece of litigation, that was basically so huge and massive, involving thousands and thousands of documents. And literally, I am very serious about that. We wrote that into the contract that that would not be included. Because if that was included, I would've essentially been a city attorney for free, okay? If, if I had not been providing those services, some other outside counsel would be providing those services. So that is not an extra cost, all right? And I, I think you also had some questions about the outside attorney, the number of attorneys we have, okay? I, I'd like to address that, too, all right? When, when we first hired Ms. Bastian, Ms. Bastian was working in the planning department for, I think it was, for a certain amount, for a very small additional amount, okay? Then we were already paying her. We brought her over to legal, all right? So, so in other words, that position was never filled. So all we were, actually, the additional cost was a fraction. In addition to that, we had a bill from outside legal counsel for approximately forty-five thousand dollars, okay? So what we did was, for five thousand dollars more, we stopped paying an outside attorney forty-five thousand dollars, all right? In addition to that, Ms. Bastian has generated approximately ninety-something thousand dollars. About forty thousand dollars, we have an accounts receivable and payment plans. She just received a check from Union Pacific, which she negotiated with them for forty-two thousand dollars. So with due respect, ma'am, I think the legal department is actually not only costing less money, but we're providing more legal services than we ever have. And, and actually, it's not costing the additional money, because number one, we've replaced outside counsel with inside counsel, and we're generating money, where we take a very private sector kind of approach to the department. But, and anytime you have a question, ma'am, please feel free to call me, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I encourage you to do that. I encourage you to do that, because I mean-
I don't have the time, sir. I work.
But you come here blasting.
It's in the, in the middle of the night.
But you come here blasting. All you, just pick up the phone.
Because I only have time in the middle of the night to do my research.
Please proceed. Is there five minutes almost up?
One minute.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you. Things are not as simple as some people make them out to be, ladies and gentlemen. I know we would love for these states to send their manufacturing jobs down to Brownsville. But that's not our job. We market ourselves. We have an economic development department. We're here volunteers, trying to oversee the operations of the city with the city manager. We provide the incentives through our chamber, through our economic, things are not as simple as people try to make them out to be. The hard fact is this. Nobody addressed it. We got six point, projected six point eight million dollar deficit. Those are reality numbers. It, it's gonna affect service, projects, if we don't balance the budget. We have to cut. Where do we cut? Do we cut police? Do we cut fire? Do we cut? What do we cut? Do we cut administration? Where do we cut? Madam, you had your time. Can't you just sit there and be quiet for a little bit? Well, you had your ti- you had your turn. What I'm saying is, the, the, the solutions are not simple. They're working on them, and the management is with, with the finance director and, and the city commission. I know we're gonna, we're gonna get through this, but I wish people had a little more understanding that, from listening to these people here, it's not that simple. That's all I want to say.
If this hearing is over, we would like for you to carry over the, oh, make a motion to.
Continue. You want a continuous? Pete, 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 you want a continuous, right? Yeah, but you want a continuous, right?
For next week.
Yeah.
I, I was looking at the budget. I, I told Pete that I've been trying to get ahold of him at least a couple of times. I haven't gotten a call back, so before you ask, I try contacting anybody. And no, I haven't tried to contact you about it, because we've discussed this before. You like to run away when I try to talk to you. My concern is, is I've looked at some parts of the budget with regards to the amount of money in miscellaneous revenue, for example. You moved in miscellaneous revenue for record, car record services, two, three, two years ago in two thousand and nine, you made about nine thousand dollars. Last year, the revenue, proposed revenue was zero dollars. And now, for whatever reason, you're projecting a ninety thousand dollar revenue increase in this particular thing. It's kind of quite of a, quite of a swing in terms of revenue. You also have another part of revenue where you look at Mr. Saucy, who came up here and spoke about raising, getting a franchise fee of five percent from Texas Gas Service, from four percent to five percent, which is an essential increase in amount, in, in money coming into the city. You had last year about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars or three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I don't remember. I looked at it, skimmed it a couple of days ago, of actual revenue coming in with a four percent franchise fee. Now with a five percent franchise fee, you're projecting only two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It might, there might be some sort of under-revenue with regards to that. It's those kinds of little things that I feel that if you, if you look at it as a whole, there's some sort of under-revenue and over-revenue, and there's some, and expenditures as well, there's some over and under that. If you find a way to get some sort of happy medium, you might not have the six point eight million dollars that you keep talking about throughout the night in terms of a deficit. And on top of that, there's nothing to preclude this particular city commission from actually going out to the voters and say, "Voters, we really need this particular debt. We really need this certificate of obligation." There's nothing in a certificate of obligation act that doesn't allow for you to do that with or without regard to having voters sign some sort of petition. And I think that if you really need this particular money, Mayor, you should use some sort of a bond and tell the voters what you really feel and how you want to access this particular money. Part of the problem with the Certificate of Obligation Act, or the certicoes that you all were going for, you all were going for a five million dollar certigo on streets without specifying what the streets were.
And again.
Southern Commissioner. And that's part of the problem, is that you're not being completely transparent. Although you are being very transparent, and I want to congratulate Pete on having his, his award for doing the check registry and having the budget online completely in detail. But there's more things that's happening. I know that, that Mark was talking about how he's, your, your current assistant city attorney has brought in a lot of money, ninety thousand dollars a year and forty-two thousand dollars a year. I looked at a miscellaneous revenue with regards to clean, cleaning lots. I believe in your two thousand and ten fiscal year budget, you, you hired this particular person because they were going to pay for themselves. Well, the amount of money that they brought in in cleaning lots was actually less than the amount of money you brought in the year before. And to me, if you're gonna break, at least break even, or you're going to actually make this person pay for herself, you should at least earn the amount of money that the last person earned, plus your salary. And it's obvious in this particular instance that they didn't. And I believe that if you're gonna have a particular city attorney get paid a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that maybe you should have him be the one doing the negotiations, not necessarily an assistant city attorney who's only making forty-five thousand dollars a year. There's a lot more like that that I think that you all should do, and I think some of you do do, and you do your due diligence. It'd be interesting to ask Mr. Gonzalez the amount of money you're gonna have a budget amendment, because your budget presentation right now doesn't include the budget amendments that you're going to be approving or not approving later on in this particular meeting. I believe he said it was something about a million when I talked to him a few minutes ago. That's a lot of money that doesn't take into account this. And to answer your question, Commissioner, that you asked Mr. Uresti about whether or not we would be in favor of, you know, not having the city pay for P U B, that's a good question. But the, but the real, the underlying problem is, will the citizens, the ratepayers, have to take, take over the slack because the city isn't paying their fair share? And if you're saying no, well then, then go for it. I mean, if you're saying that there's not gonna be some sort of slack paying for it, that's a good idea, and I applaud you for actually having that idea. But I, I don't necessarily one hundred percent agree that we, the ratepayers, are not gonna be taking up the slack because the city isn't paying for that. But if you can guarantee some sort of writing, you know, you'll pay it all back somehow, then go for it. But I would like to recommend that you stop using, looking at your cellphone while you're doing a meeting. It wasn't very fair to Mr. Loft to have your phone ringing. I, I mean, pay attention to the meeting. I know it's only ten dollars you get paid, but at least pay attention to whoever's speaking. Not, I don't care what you do about me, but Mr. Loft is a good person. He didn't deserve you not paying attention to him. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. Yeah, Rick? Commissioner, sorry.
Are you addressing him?
No.
You finished?
Well, he was gonna say something. All right, Commissioner.
As an elected official, as an elected official, every year, you come to the budget cycle, knowing that there's a, you need to increase taxes for this city to continue to function. You see that we've remained the same for years and years and years. Every year, we sit here, we listen to you, you come. We froze your taxes. Senior citizens still come speak out, go and raise the taxes. Their taxes are frozen. Every year, we need money to make this city function, and every year, we do without. Our employees, non-civil, non-civil service, have not gotten a raise. They've done without. We're not, we're not spending your money. The process is calling for this money to be spent. Now, we accept the criticism. We accept the comments. But now, you're going into how we, we've already done without, and we're spending this certain amount of money. Now, we've given you transparency. We've given you the books. Here they are. Go through them. That allows you to come to an open session and criticize it. Not a problem. But now, there, there has to be a limit. Now you overstep your boundaries by going into the money that we're, the little money that we're working with. This is how we spend it. Now you're coming to criticize how we spend that money. Where does it end? We've done without for years and years and years. Has the mayor, have I, have Charlie, have Anthony, ever considered, the ladies, anyway, Edward, we've all considered it. There needs to be a tax increase. God, we need it. Do we need it? Yes. Is this the year we're gonna raise taxes? Well, you wanna say reelected? Maybe you might not agree with the projects that any of us, as an individual, has with the city. You might be against pause. You must get, you must be against one of my projects. That's not a problem. But the thing is, we're trying to work with what we've got. And just like yourselves that go out there and are told, I'm being told by the community. Well, heck, I'm the elected official. I hear it every day. I hear it at work. I hear it on the street. I hear it at H U B. Like we all do. We all hear it. But you know what? We haven't raised taxes. We have not. You wanna go on a point ten percent or a point one hundredth of a penny? Okay, crucify me. That's just the way the system works. But ladies and gentlemen, over the years, this city commission has been pro-community, has tried to work. Do we have our flaws? We do, just like any other entity. Do we fight hell? Like everybody says, we're the biggest circus in town. Okay, but you know what? We're here to make the decisions. Right or wrong, whether you agree with them or not, elect us, don't elect us in the next cycle, that's your God-given right as an American, to come and elect us the next cycle. But while we're here, we're trying to do the best we can. We work with what we have and within our means. And yet, you still come up to the meeting, year after year, criticize us over the same issues, over the same things. But you know what? We don't have any money. We haven't gotten any more money from you at all. And we're trying to do without. Now I know that you're gonna say no, but you all haven't seen this. You ask, you know what? I'm not an economist. I'm a policymaker, okay? I come to approve or disapprove. That's my job. My job is to come, to listen to what's, we're a city manager, run city. Whatever city manager, finance director, the bond covenant, bondholder, whatever they bring to us, we have to review, and we have to either approve or disapprove. That's my job as a policymaker. It's not my job to spend your money. It's to approve if it's gonna get spent or not. So please, please, enough with the, "You're misspending my money." You're not, because you know what? When it all comes down to the, at the end of the day, we don't have any money, okay? We haven't made- We haven't made any more money from last year, like the mayor said, we're even now, we're negative. We're negative six million, and you know what? How do I account, not to, not to the people that are complaining here, to the average citizen outside? How do I account, how do I attest my accountability as an elected official? How am I supposed to go back out into that community and tell them, you know what? Heck, we're second, we're negative six million. But you know what? I didn't raise your taxes. Am I gonna raise your taxes? I'm telling you right now, I haven't done it for the last seven years, I'm not gonna do it in this cycle. Because why? You will not elect me at the next election, because you know what? I was the city commissioner that raised your taxes, and that's what it is. You wanna know the truth? I'm not gonna raise your taxes because you won't elect me again. Okay? Because that's what you want, you don't want me to raise your taxes, so I won't. So I won't. To appease the general public that does not want a tax increase, I will. Because you know what? There's other things aside from the tax increase or from taxes that I need to do. There's projects that I'm doing for this community, that we're doing for this community, that we believe need to get done to take this city into the future. So, to appease you with no tax increase, I can guarantee you, we're not gonna have a tax increase. But you know what? We are gonna be negative. And now, we need to come up with a way on how to do it. Last time it was P U B. P U B saved us. I didn't hear any comments about, oh, you saved it, I heard comments about, you know what, we balanced the budget, we're gonna be okay, at least for this year. But then all we heard was, you did it by going to P U B. In other words, nobody is ever happy, at least from the comments that we're hearing, from the people that come up, week after week after week, saying it. But you know what? I'm telling you today, more than likely, as history has, has done, we're not gonna raise your taxes. But you know what? Enough. Enough with the criticism, because you know what? All we're trying to do is just do the best. Some of you have run for office, some of you have not. It's your choice. You wanna run for, you've run for office, you wanna run again, go ahead. I invite you. I invite you to do it again. Throw your hat and come up and deal, and have to do, it's very easy to come up and say, Commissioner, 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 Commissioner. No, no, no. But sit in this seat, sit in this chair, and go through it, and have to make that tough decision, and go tell that employee that they're not gonna get a raise. It's not the same. It is not. We're trying to do the best that we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me, let me add a little perspective to this.
Sure, your time's up.
Seventy-two percent, seventy-two percent of your budget, of your budget, is used for public safety. That's police, fire, and ambulance. Seventy-two percent. That leaves twenty-eight percent of the general fund, okay? For administration. That's to operate and run this city. I think we do miracles here. The employees, and this is what I find heartbreaking, they haven't had a raise, a cooler, a raise in four years. And let me tell you, they're very dedicated, yeah, you have one or two here, bad apples here and there, but they're hardworking, people that give more than what's expected out of them. Many of you, you see them working overtime, not getting any, any extra for it. They give more than their all. Do people appreciate it? I don't think so. You show your appreciation by giving them a raise that they're entitled to. But we can't do it with this budget. We couldn't do it last year with that budget, a year before with a budget. Y'all go home and maybe even applaud that they do without, their families do without. You laugh about it maybe, I don't know. But I know nobody's addressing their needs. They have needs too. And you want your streets paved? You want your museums and your arts and your zoo and your parks and, and everything maintained? But where do we get the money from? We get it from you, it's your investment in your community. Now we got a six, projected six point eight million dollar shortage, last year we got three million from P U B. But in the end, you pay for it, it's all your, your money. We're not benefiting from it, that's for sure. We're just trying to do the best we can for you. But we tell you, this year, I'll, I'll go along with the commission, we're not gonna raise taxes. I proposed to raise taxes when the time was good, because I think that was the time to do it. But mark my words, everything I've told you has come to pass. That three dollars would eliminate a lot of the problems we're having right now. Okay? Not raising the taxes when the time was good, one penny, two pennies? You're gonna see this city go through a, a crisis, to where your rate's gonna increase, not by five cents, maybe even by eight cents. Your utility rate's gonna increase too at the same time, everything's gonna increase at the same time, and you all are gonna scream bloody murder. But you're not gonna have a choice. Because it's either that or go broke and break the city. I proposed three years ago to create a public safety district, to where you approve the budget for public safety. The rate, tax rate increases for public safety. Because the public safety is what eats our lunch here, doesn't give us much for anything else. Next year, by contract, there's a razor that we, we have a six eight point eight million dollar projected deficit right now, wait till next year, when that contract kicks in and we have to provide the raises. Where are y'all, where are y'all gonna come up with these suggestions? You know, grab the money from the thinner, it's not gonna happen. Bring somebody from other state here, create jobs, that's not gonna solve the problem. Y'all are ignoring it. Y'all are ignoring it, and you're happy that we don't do this, we don't do that, but eventually you will pay for it, I promise you. Now, I think we'd like to hear ourselves talk, because I think there's no consensus of raising the taxes. So, what's the issue here, what are we discussing here? Maybe even till midnight? Who knows? There's not gonna be a tax increase, so y'all wanna hear yourselves talk? Come forward and talk. Please. Mayor Commissioners, citizens of Bronzio. Gentlemen, ladies, uh, it's not about, I don't come here to criticize you. You are a lawmaker, and, and I come here because you're a policymaker, to have an input with you. You make the final decision. I address the issues, I tell you what I have studied, what I have learned, and it's up to you to decide whatever you wanna do. I have addressed the informal economy. You know, the informal economy here, because of the culture in Mexico, because my father had his business in Mexico, I worked in Mexico City for the civil service, and, and I know how they are. People don't like to pay taxes. And we have inherited a lot of the culture here, they have come, we have let them come into our country when we're accustomed to work and pay taxes. Now we have a lot of people that are not paying taxes, that you're only penalizing the small group, you know? You're only, there's a lot of people, this is things that we have to address. You know, and I have already mentioned it to you, the informal economy is larger than the regular economy. And, and we have not done anything about it. Now, I told you, right now's the time to issue debt. Why? Three point forty-four percent? If that's fixed income, go for it. In other words, consolidate, and pay all your debts, and let's go for the, for the three point forty-four percent interest, fixed interest. I have no problem with that. Now, I have no problem with you raising taxes, not minimum, no, do what you have to do, because we have a compromise with, with, with the community, especially with the police officers, security. You need to take care of the poor, I mean, the, the young and the old, and the middle, well, you know, we have a lot of women that, you know, we have a lot of problems. We, we have gangs, and we have this, and we have, we need to really support the police department, not in the manner that the, the mayor recommends, but by looking at areas that I have brought to you. Because the, you know, the load and a national perspective has always been the middle class. The rich, they have all the tax breaks. The poor, they don't have money to pay taxes. So who, who gets stuck with a, with a bill? The middle class. Now Mr. Bush did the, did us the favor with all his buddies over there in Wall Street and Main Street or whatever, to eliminate half, half of those people. The middle class has shrunk. Jobs have been lost. And I say, you know what? Can we raise taxes, go ahead and do what you have to do, but hold it. Don't issue debt. Don't issue debt then, because this is the budget we have. But you say we have sixty million, eighty million, whatever, but don't come and sell bonds that I have to pay at long term. You know, you know what I'm telling you? Because then I have this debt and I have another debt that's created. You see? And like this lady was saying about bringing people from Minnesota, bring them all down here, so they can cover all the potholes we have. I have no problem with that. I love Bronzio, just like you do, and like everybody else here does, that's why you all are here, because you love Bronzio. But you know, we, we need to reach a consensus, and like I told Mr. Longoria, we're not here to criticize you. We have input, and, and in, in the process, you reach consensus. Now, you have the last word, so really, there's no consensus. But I will say, you know what? We need the money to operate, to work, because we need to have protection, especially more now than ever. Especially more now than ever. We need these people to be armed like they're supposed to, to have good vehicles and things like that, because the enemy, we have terrorists now, worse than terrorists, just across the street. These gentlemen are doing a terrific job, and their job isn't, their life is on the, on the line every day, twenty-four hours. And you know what? Whatever it takes, raise the taxes. Because you have to pay these people well. Because in order to get protection, which is the most important thing, the protection of the community, we cannot draw a line. Go for it. Go for what you need, and let's roll it. And remember, if you can consolidate at that interest rate, fix, roll it. Don't forget the informal economy. You need to do something to address it. We need to do something to address it, they're getting away free. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Reese.
And I want to wear the motorcycle, I have your boots.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reese. Mr. Reese made a, a statement here supporting raising taxes to pay public safety. How many of you want us to raise taxes to do that? You wanna raise your hand? Only one person, so I guess it's overwhelmingly against you. Okay. Okay, you got two people. You got three, the chief of police is for raising. But this just goes to show what everybody's opinion priorities are. Okay? The city employees that would tell you the same thing, raise the taxes to increase their payroll, their paycheck. But it's not an easy thing to do, to operate a city, maintain it. I commend the city manager for what he does, and then all the commissioners here for the criticism they take. And the demands that are being put on us, that we want this, we want that. You know, the money's gotta come from somewhere.
Mr. Reese, one, one discussion more, please. The other issue that I wanted to address and forgot about it, is what we're looking at right now at the appraisal district. You see, we should have a team of persons here that we have right now in the city, to go and more or less, and oversight audits, to make sure. Because now you can do it with computers, you know, you can do it with computers, you can go to the sites, and make sure that everybody's paying their fair share. And you know, they go back to the park, you know, when they were trying to buy the Murphy's Run for three million dollars, I went to the appraisal district, and they had it appraised for ninety thousand dollars.
Thank you. Okay.
Mayor, city commissioners, once again, my name's Ernesto De Leon. I come here not to criticize, of course I know the situation that y'all are under, because you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't. But yet, I would humbly suggest that we look at other avenues, uh, and I'm sure you looked at it with a fine tooth comb, but we still can find things that we could cut down, or, or do other things that might bring in some revenue. I stand corrected, the city manager corrected me here where I found this in the budgets, new positions requested two point something million dollars. And am I correct that this is not under six million?
Yeah, there's a memo from me there that says, none of the requested positions are being finally integrated.
Okay, that's, like I said, I stand corrected, because I was not aware of this, as I told you. So basically, two things that I would like to suggest. For many years, um, I tried, to try to get B and M Bridge to contribute. It's part of their toll for using our streets. We need to pursue that. They should be liable, or they should be paying something for the use of our streets. Maybe, Mr. Attorney, find a way that maybe you might be able to get us some money on, on that deal. Now, the other thing that we need to get rid of is, and it's not paying, it's costing the taxpayers, is the golf course. The golf course. The, uh, school district has indicated an interest in purchasing that property. I don't know if what we could, or if there's something that you need to consider, because if it's, if it's not working, I got, you're just throwing our money away. So, to that respect, I sympathize with the situation, thank you for letting me come before you.
Well, Mr. De Leon, remember, Mr. De Leon, remember when I proposed that two and a half years ago?
Yes, and I also was watching.
Got blasted over it?
Yeah. Remember, about two weeks ago, you mentioned something about the impact fees, I was watching it on T V. I did the same thing, I was with you on that deal, had we done that many years ago, instead of two thousand and eighty, two thousand and ninety, when we spent over six hundred something thousand dollars of taxpayers' money. And now they say, well, it's not working, no, because the economy situ, the economic situation is, nobody's buying. It's not because of the impact fees, thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Dearlum, welcome to our chamber.
Can I ask something real quick?
Sure.
I wanna ask Pete and Charlie, we talk about this a lot, you know, the mayor's asking for solutions, but we keep trying not to bring up the issue of P U B, and this is something I've talked about for the last three or four years, is how the city is in one predicament and P U B's in another predicament, have record-breaking profits since last year, and it seems like it's just a bad thing to say, hey, borrow from P U B, or, or get it from P U B. Why do we avoid one of our biggest assets, which belongs to the city and its citizens? Why are we not, see, there's a board over there, and, and they do a good job for what they do. But at the end of the day, it's gonna be hard for them to wanna give the city anything, from what I hear, because all those P U B employees are being threatened that, hey, if, if you help the city, you're not gonna get a raise. So now you have P U B employees going to these P U B meetings and saying, are you not gonna give us a raise now? You're not gonna give us, so they intimidate this board at P U B to say, well, maybe we shouldn't help the city out with, but then they're gonna, what is the burden come back to the city commission? We, you know, you ask for solutions, Mayor, without raising taxes, there's a big solution right there, we get ten percent from P U B. You agree with that?
Go ahead and finish your.
Okay? Where most cities get fourteen percent of the transfer from, that's like another four million dollars right there. But nobody wants to touch that issue. I'm the only one who wants to bring it up and say, because at the end of the day, they don't care over there, the, and I'm not talking about the board, I'm talking about the management over there. They're gonna get their cost of living raises, you know, their C E O makes twice as much as, as Charlie Kavler, our city manager, but nobody wants to address the issues. Now, we were supposed to start a board where you, Camarillo, and Gau, and I, we haven't, we're not, we need a meet. We need a meet, and meet with P U B, and see what exactly, because for some reason, we put people on this board, and they just turn against the city like that, they're like, whoa, we can't give, no, you can't come to the city, we don't, the city shouldn't be asking us for money. Why? Why? If our biggest asset is making profit and revenues that can help our city out, why are we not being more aggressive with that? I, I just don't understand why the, the city would put us in a predicament that we're in right now in a six million dollar shortfall, when we have an exhausted, I don't mind raising taxes if we're not gonna do that. But people ask me, Charlie, go look at P U B, there is the cash cow, why is the city afraid to hold them accountable? We'd rather go through this right now in a death We'd rather go through this right now in a deficit and, and the city's in, in, in bad shape, but why? Before I want to raise your taxes, and I don't mind raising taxes, you know, Commissioner Longoria, I agree with you. You know, we have stayed the course for four, five years in not raising taxes. Longer since two thousand and two, we have not raised taxes. We lowered taxes. And for the city to say, hey, roll it back to where it was, I don't think I have a problem with that anymore if we can't get the solutions the mayor's asking for. And the, and there's a solution there. Now, he might, I don't know where you stand on it right now and how you feel about it, because you sit on that board, but you have to tell me. You can't tell me that that's not a solution.
Let me respond. It's not as simple as people make it out to be. And I think Pete, if you'll take the podium a minute, there's a risk that you put P U B in by tapping into P U B's income other than as provided by charter and bond covenants that, that puts P U B in jeopardy. P U B is capital intensive. The city is service-intensive. It provides services. P U B has to do continuous improvements, upgrades, projects to maintain the system and provide at a cost that is competitive or below the competition to where the citizen's dividend comes back to them in rates, low rates, okay? To take more money from P U B than we, as allowed by charter or get in there and micromanage P U B is taking P U B back to where in the sixties, when the system was poorly managed, running very inefficient, having a lot of blackouts, and the system was a mess. That's why it was separated from the city and expected to stand on its own, and that's why it's semi-autonomous. Now, I don't have any problem with getting fourteen percent from P U B as compared to the ten percent. I don't have any problem with it. But we have to change the charter and we have to go back and buy all the bonds, okay? And refinance in order to meet our obligations. Otherwise, we could be in default. You want to address that?
Well, let me ask you something, Pete, before you answer that, but what are we at risk? We're at risk of going bankrupt, right, the city? Well, you talk about this big hole, Mayor. We're falling into it and here's a solution, but go ahead, say something. Because I, because you know, I've talked to Pete many times about this and they, and he'll tell me and you better not deny it, they have the money. They have a, a mechanism in place that we can tap into.
Okay, so now you're going to raise rates?
Commissioner, Commissioner, four or five years ago, when the transfer to the city was a question mark for all of us, we didn't understand it. Nobody understood it, I don't believe, with a few exceptions. We went and requested to simplify the transfer and the number that was agreed upon was ten percent. And that's where we are now. Obviously, what the mayor is saying is correct. They had to go through all these procedures.
And you're not willing to go through it again?
That's, that's what we're discussing with bond council, and we have the same bond council. But you're, you're saying, why don't we, we... I went to P U B last year and asked for three million dollars, which was approved by their board. The options we're presenting to the commission today is tax rate, go to P U B, and anything else we can find. P U B is going to counter, I guess, and say, how about raising rates that they haven't done for a long time, which they say are the lowest in the state as far as utilities and things like that. Wherever we go, there's going to be obstacles. There's going to be questions. There's going to be concerns. And you're right, we need to find a way to address our shortfalls, which is our budget. And we're going to do what we have to do, unpleasant presentations like this where people have concerns, but it's open to the public, the people can come here. We try to simplify it by advising, this is the average home price in Brownsville. If you raise it one cent, this is what you pay per year. If you raise it two cents, this is what you pay per year. And then we're going to go to PU, do a presentation to them about if you give us three million dollars or you give us two million dollars, this is how it's going to help our budget and what is it going to do to you? So bond council is preparing them for that and preparing us for any and all questions we may need to ask. But everything's being done, including going to P U B. So, we're just going through the motions, unpleasant motions, but that's what we're going through.
What about the issue of dropping impact fees? Based on my conversations with city staff, we put them so high that there's no growth in Brownsville, people aren't building houses. Is, is that true or not?
Is that true? The, the growth is due to the economy, the way there's economies in the town. No, we lost millions of dollars by not adopting the impact fees. It was recommended in two thousand and four, I think it was done in two thousand and eight. We lost millions of dollars in, which is costing P U B money for capital improvements. When we took the three million dollars from P U B last year, they had to cut back on some capital improvements. So, you know, somebody's got to pay for this. I mean, you're getting it and you're off, hey, I'm happy, but somebody's going to make the sacrifice.
Exactly.
And maybe they even have to raise rates to make up for what you're getting. You know, it's not as simple as we like to make, make, make it out to be. The city manager's right. The way to do this is go back with a financial advisor and if it can be restructured again, then we go through the restructure, but we have to abide by the city charter. If not, you put P U B in jeopardy. It's not that simple. You have restrictions, you have bond covenants, and you can't be violating those bond covenants because then they can call them in and you're in default. And, and, and if you want P U B to continue to give the best service at, at the lowest rates, you also have to take into account that they have to raise rates too at a moderate level, not at all at once to where they raise them up high, just like the city, you shouldn't have to raise the tax rate... To ninety cents or seventy-five cents all at once, because a few people scream here, don't raise taxes, don't raise taxes. Well, nobody wants to raise taxes, ever.
Ten years ago.
But if you don't do one or two cents, gradually, you're going to have to do it all at once in a big chunk. And if you go back to nineteen ninety and people forget this, I think Commissioner De Leon will remember. In nineteen ninety, the tax rate was seventy-five cents. Seventy-five cents. In nineteen ninety, the population was, what, ninety-something thousand? Okay? And now we got two hundred thousand and our tax rate is even lower and there's, we got a larger police force and there, we got more roads, we got seven hundred miles of roads that we got to maintain. So people don't, don't really see the picture that, hey, we were from seventy-five cents, we go to down sixty-five cents and all we're asking for is one penny, two pennies, you know? And they're, they're fighting over us, don't, 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 don't. So eventually, you will break the city, just like you're going down this road, six-point-eight million dollar shortfall. What's going to happen? You're eating your reserves, a hurricane comes in, a disaster comes in, and we're sitting there with our thumbs in our mouth. How do we respond? How do we respond to the citizens that we're supposed to protect? We're supposed to provide the services. We're supposed to help get back on their feet because we did not take the responsibility of balancing our budget and, and, and not eating our reserves. But, you know, right now is not the time, I know, because the economy's really bad. I agree with that. The time was two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. A penny here, a penny there, or the three, the three dollars were proposed, that would have helped a lot deal with this problem that we're having now. And, you know, Mr. Reste made, made a, 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 a proposition here, raise it fifty cents. But I, I guarantee you, when you go to raise fifty cents, you're going to have everybody here saying no. Somebody else made the comment about, Mr. De Leon, about selling the golf course. I, I brought it to the commission of selling half of the golf course and turning the golf course into a nine-hole and let the school district build a school back there and a sportsplex, a park that we could also use with them. Half a golf course and then go build an eighteen golf course where the sports park was with the money that we got from selling half of golf course. So we would have a golf course and a half and a sportsplex. And people didn't understand it. They came here and complained and yelled at the top of their lungs and killed the proposal that P U B, that B I S D was interested in by half of our golf course. So, you know, we're intimidated into submission because some people don't understand the whole picture. And they walk away happy, but now, who's dealing with the problem of six-point-eight million? You are. You are. We are. He is. They don't care how we deal with it. They don't care. They couldn't care less. All they know is, don't raise that penny. Don't raise my utility rates. Go down the, the track of breaking the city. And there is a history of this. In nineteen forty, the city was filing for bankruptcy. That's where we are.
All right. I know some of you all. I've helped you all out. I think y'all need to go back to your budget, try to balance it. County did that. You do not cut services for police or fire. If you have to raise the rates for P U B, do it slowly. Don't do it all at once. And that's all I got to say.
Very wise lady. Do it slowly, don't do it all at once. It's very wise. Thank you. Any other public comments? Please come forward. That's it? Okay, this is, not, not, you want to continue this public hearing?
Want to continue?
We have a motion to continue and a second motion made by Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Camarillo to continue, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Thank you. Now, let's go to the public comments.
Item number nine. Consideration in action to adopt budget amendment resolution number twenty-ten dash zero fifty-seven to amend the general fund budget, convention and tourism fund and airport fund.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city commission, this is a budget amendment to fund certain projects that are expected to go over and that was the, in the general fund, we have the Impala Drive property. This is property that we had acquired on the Impala drainage project. We also have the widening of the, we had a commitment widening the highway two-eighty-one in front of Memorial High School. We had, last week, we approved improvements to the Gladys Porter Zoo, nineteen thousand to twenty-seven. And acquired, we're also acquiring some software for the EMS billings that's for forty-one thousand thirty-nine of local share. We also transferring money for the convention and tourism fund. The hotel motel tax is not as strong as we thought it was going to be, so we don't want the fund to be in the red, so the general fund has to kick in the cash transfer. We also have the airport fund of seven hundred thousand dollars. I just spoke to the airport director. He's, the reason why we had this is because there was a, a building that was supposed to be sold, has not been sold yet. He is, he's telling me that, that more than likely this building will be, will be sold, not in, not this fiscal year, but early next fiscal year. Assuming that the building is, is, is sold before September thirtieth, then we don't transfer all of the money that's, that's been approved tonight. We will only transfer the funds that are actually needed at the airport. So the total transfer, total budget amendment for all these funds is one million forty-five thousand six seventy-eight.
This is an action. We have a motion. The motion to approve, a motion to second. Or second, a motion to review and further discussion.
One question on the US two-eighty-one widening of Memorial High School. What does that entail? The twenty-nine thousand?
I'd say, I think it's a corporate agreement between the, the school district, the county and, and the, and the city as well as the state also.
Yeah, it's been brought before the commission. We, we all agreed on...
There was a debt there, remember?
Good, sorry.
It's going to be a higher maintenance traffic because of new school there requires the widening.
Improvements to the road, improvements to the traffic lights, et cetera.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a, a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item ten.
Item ten, consideration in action to authorize Mr. Charlie Kavler, city manager, to accept a grant award on behalf of the Brownsville Public Library System as part of the Federal American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, C F D A, number eleven point five five four, eleven point five five seven broadband technology opportunities program in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, nine hundred and twenty, for the provision of a public computing center at the main library.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, the Brownsville Public Library System, as just pointed out, has received a grant from the US Department of Congress, which is part of the American Investment Recovery Act, to this stimulus... to this stimulus fund for eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. This will be used for a public computer center at the main library. As well as that, this grant application was in partnership with the, um, United Way of Brownsville, the Brownsville Literacy Center and Texas Southmost College. Uh, the literacy center will receive twelve computers for their mobile lab. The United Way of Brownsville will receive five computers, and both those, uh, locations will be connecting back to the main library via wireless. The Texas Southmost College will receive thirty computers, and the library system will receive one hundred and twenty computers for our main internet lab for the general public, with up to sixty-three for the teen area that will be developed along with the classroom to provide educational services to the residents of Brownsville. As part of this, I would like to thank, uh, Ben Medina, Director of the Planning Department, and the city grant writers, Stephanie Garza and John Rodriguez, who, without whose help, the library could not have completed this application in the very short time the federal government gave us to apply. Also, I would like to thank Mr. James McCoy, my assistant director, who managed the application process, and without whose hard work and dedication, this application would not have been funded. Finally, I would like to point out that this grant will make a difference to the more than seven hundred and twenty thousand people that are projected to use our library system for this fiscal year. Last year, we had almost six hundred and forty thousand, and based upon current rates of utilization for the two facilities that we have, we believe we will reach at least seven hundred and twenty thousand for this fiscal year.
Thank you, Jerry, thank you, James, thank you, everybody that worked on it. I hear Don Pindro is anxious to see these, uh, and, these computers.
Yes.
Thank you all.
I'm glad to see that you applied for a grant, you received it, and yet you wore very nice suits to the meeting when you, instead of asking for money, you're bringing money, so, you look very nice. I'm gonna approve, Mayor.
Second.
First time I see James in a suit, so we don't-
And they're not asking for money, they're actually bringing money, so that's a good thing.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second by-
Mayor, can I make a comment real quick, like?
Sure.
You know, Jerry, and Jeff was a part of this, when they were first writing the grant, um, and we held this initial meetings, the university was going to write the grant, and after talks and so forth, it, it was, it was discussed, and it was approved that it'd be best if the city write the grant. I think that was just a great, great leadership, Jeff and, and, and Jerry and James, to make sure that you all understood the needs of all the other entities in which played out via the grant. So, I wanna thank you all for taking the leadership and really making it happen, as well as Stephanie and John, because I know that those, those two individuals and, and your staff really worked crazy hours to make sure they turned it in in time, and they did an awesome job, so I'm real happy for all of you all.
Thank you very much. I'd also like to point out to the commission that of all the applicants in the state of Texas, there were, I believe, five awarded to the state under this stimulus fund for this type of project, and we are the only municipality in the state of Texas to be awarded.
Congratulations, thank you. We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven.
Item eleven, consideration in action on Resolution Number twenty-ten dash zero fifty-eight, in support of the nomination of Worldwide Consolidated Logistics Incorporated, Pan-American Airways Incorporated as an enterprise zone in the city of Brownsville.
Honorable Mayors, uh, City Commissioners, uh, with this application, uh, to be submitted by the Brownsville Economic Development Council, and the approval of the, of this resolution, Worldwide Consolidated, uh, Logistics would be applying for a nomination under the state enterprise zones. Uh, the incentives of this, uh, is that they will get a reimbursement of the state's portion of the sales tax that they pays, uh, on the, on the billing materials. Part of the requirements is, of course, they have to hire disadvantaged, low-income, uh, Brownsville citizens. So, I, I think they're located at the airport, and I think, uh, I propose that you support this, this resolution.
Would approve?
Second.
Motion approved, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item thirteen.
Item twelve, consideration in action for the purchase of electronic patient care reporting software with the build, with the billing module for the EMS division of the Brownsville Fire Department.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners, uh, step recommendation is to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation, and maintenance of an electronic patient care reporting software and the billing module to be used by the EMS division of the Brownsville Fire Department, and this is going to a, uh, sole corporation of, uh, Groome Field, Colorado. Uh, this purchase includes a second and third-year software maintenance agreement, which total a project cost of a hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. All the software training, maintenance will be provided by the recommended vendor, and subsequent year maintenance and support will be provided on an annual basis after the third year. Uh, funding for this contract is available from the funds that are included on the agenda, and the administration of the Fire Department, uh, concurs with recommendation.
Okay, this is an action item, would approve?
I have a question.
Make the motion first. You got a motion, vote, motion, second? Second, okay, discussion?
I'm gonna vote in favor, but, but I just have a question.
Yes.
In, in Knicks and private offices, there are funds available through meaningful use to reimburse for the use of electronic medical records. Does that apply in this, in this instance? Is the department eligible to apply for reimbursement of any of that funding from the, incentives, I guess is what it's called, from the government?
For that portion, I will.
I'd have to look into it, to be honest with you, ma'am, I had never heard of it. But you can direct me where to go to, I'll research it and see if we can do that.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? A motion made by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner, um, Samora. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item thirteen.
Item thirteen, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of ten laptops and two servers for use by the EMS division of the Brownsville Fire Department, the electronic patient care reporting software and billing module.
This recommendation is basically to purchase the har, the hardware necessary for the software, and it's also, uh, gonna be used by the EMS division of the Fire Department. Uh, it is gonna be purchased, uh, through Dell Corporation of Rat Rock, Texas, for the amount of sixty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-one cents. Now, this procurement reflects DIR contract pricing, that's the Department of Information Resources. Funding is, uh, funding is available, uh, from, via a budget resolution that was presented by, by Mr. Pete Gonzalez. So, recommendation from the Fire Department, it's, it's included in the, in the agenda.
Would approve?
We have a motion to approve, and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move, a second.
We have a motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you all.